We've heard from district staff and we've heard from the public on this. And I'd like to go ahead and open up to your comments, your questions, anything that you want to bring up this time. Dr. Noel.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all of you for being here. And indeed, what it says about Cesar Chavez's school is very powerful, a strong statement. I'm sad that this is not allowed here because it seems to me that this conversation should have happened about a year if not before then. And I'm troubled by the idea that we're looking at kind of an 11th hour rescue mission or 11th hour showdown, depending on the perspective. And I think that's a failure on the district's part, a failure to exercise continuous effective oversight and to do something about it. If the school was, the data go back three years, even a little farther back than that, the school had thousands of it, looked like it's coming up on renewal and went and faced this kind of situation. A little bit nice to know that a year ago, when you're going price to promote a year ago and come up with plans. As is now, we're confronted with a precious little time for thoughtful planning. And I think that is something that we need to buy. So I'm prepared, Madam President, to make a motion. Three parts. One, that the board instruct the administration to put forth the request for continued funding for this school to get that issue out of the way. Right now, that's a big level unnecessarily hanging over all of our hands and it clouds the mind rather than clears it. The second part is that the administration will report back in January, the first meeting in January, with a collaborative intervention plan to serve out the rest of this year at Cesar Chavez. And third, that at the same meeting reporting back, there will be a collaborative, or I use collaborative, agreed upon intervention plan, agreed upon process for developing a proposal referred to in Dr. Sarves's list, the proposal for a renewed, he doesn't use that term, renewed charter carrying forward into 2011, 2010-11. I'm aware of some of the implications of that. But my understanding, and I too have sources in Sacramento, my understanding is that the board does have flexibility, that while it may be a rough rug to hoe to sell their renewal of the charter, that is not impossible. And it depends entirely upon the kind of plans that are put forth. And in that sense, I have, I have, I too have a draft of a proposal, so there were three, but I couldn't say mine out because of the ground, so I only have here. But I believe that neither, either the proposal put forth by Dr. Sarves nor the proposal put forth by Ms. Fleming is rigorous enough. And I say that because of my reading of the, of what lies ahead in getting, even if this board approves the extension of this charter and the, and in subsequent request, whether you call it a new charter or a renewal, that it's going to have a rough road to hoe in Sacramento. Part of the reason is because the flags are all raised in Sacramento right now. This has been in the papers, when these things come up, people use Google. Okay? So this is going to be examined very, very carefully, I believe, by the reviewers at the CDE, by the reviewers who advise the State Board of Education. And it will, it will have to stand a pretty tough test of scrutiny. So what I came up was a pretty rigorous planning process, still leaving content up to the school, but with lots of benchmarks, program evaluation elements, the kinds of things that I feel that at least some of the people I've talked to, when they look at this, are going to want to see. And I, as a scholar and a policy person, also want to see the community that meets the demands of rigor. I've read them all off too because they're not part of my motion, but they would be part of, I hope, a discussion were my motion to be accepted. So you have the motion, you're going to review it.
Is there a second? All right, the motion dies real quick with a second. Any other board comment, questions? Mrs. Carrero.
Dr. Sarves, could you repeat what would be prohibiting us from extending the expired charter and allowing the school to request, to delay their charter renewal request until the spring?
Well, number one, revocation of the extension by the state. The state's looking at race to the top thing, the state's making a strong show of having the elements that race to this top demands, and the state is looking seriously at this point at closing charter schools that are in the bottom 5% in performance. Our school is 4.7%, it's in that bottom 5% of all elementary charter schools.
Forgive me if this sounds a little piecemeal, but if we were to essentially take our chances, if we were to adopt a resolution that allows for the school to basically substantially the same charter we have with a few revisions, but the second therefore be resolved rather than stating that they would bring forth a new charter, if it were to say that they would bring forth a materially revised charter renewal request, or request for renewal of a materially revised charter? And if we were to do that and sort of hope that the state wouldn't revoke their charter or revoke the extension, what would be the likelihood of getting through that? And if we then were to decide at the end of that process that they had complied with a number of the concerns, or suggestions for improvement on the concerns that we have, that we could, in fact, renew their charter, would that stand?
Well, I would say, I would advise you not to. I'd say you're taking a big risk. In fact, Eric Kremat in his documents says it's possible that state officials would act a lot of renewal, given recent pressure from the federal government and some charter advocates to what tough on charter school performance. One of the problems is that the wheels move, turn slowly at the CDE and then the State Board. And we might be in the position of being in limbo and then having a revocation right at the point at which we should be going forward and we're already beyond the timeline to take a new charter petition to our board so that we have plenty of time to look at it and work with the school on it. It's just a risk.
There are some questions that have been raised by the school about how difficult it would be to apply for a new charter and what the consequences that might be in terms of loss of grant funding that may not carry over to a new, to a new school, loss of reserves that may not be able to be transferred to a new school. What is, have you, have you examined what would, what it would take to request a new charter and what the possible liabilities for the school would be?
On one hand, there would be the possibility of not qualifying for money that's already available to existing charters. On the other hand, there are grants that are available for new charters. No, I haven't researched it so that I know, you know, which one's more lucrative or which one is the, of the leadership offensive.
But speaking in terms of their current money and the current reserves and all that, that would be able to roll over to a new charter?
Yes. The charter, in their own charter, has a, has a provision that, given the termination of the charter, that they can donate whatever they have, whatever assets they have, over and above needing to pay their bills to any entity they wish. And my guess is that they would donate that to the new charter.
Mrs. Deacon?
The question of the name has also come up in discussion about reconstituting the charter. Do we know if the Cesar Chavez name could stay?
Well, that's an interesting discussion because that's a discussion I had with Julie Kleinbricks. And specifically, she said, "Well, gosh, no, we don't really want to go through the inkwork of taking a school, closing the school out, and then turning around and opening it up a new dual-emergent school. I mean, can't we do something to transfer it?" And I said, "Well, what are you suggesting?" And she said, "I will have to research if there may be something in the end to be able to do that." Because I had that same concern. On one hand, you may not want the CES, you know, the test performance following a new school, you want to give the school a fresh start. But on the other hand, I know that the name is a serious issue with the community. And I know that the use of Estrada in the name was one of the conditions of using the first and surname Cesar Chavez. And I suppose there could be just a very minor revision for a new name in the dual-language immersion, or that it may still be possible to keep the name. I mean, that's, that's something I've asked of this name.
Can you delineate the process then for applying for a new charter? I mean, given that there's already existing charter template that could potentially be used, does it have, how significantly different does the charter have to be in the language of a newly constituted charter?
It has to satisfy the board. There are, the ed code has a number of requirements. It has to, oh my God, Bob, you probably remember, this is better than I do at this point.
But it's up to our board.
Yeah, I agree.
But it's up to us, it's up to this board to approve.
Yes, but the board essentially has to believe that this is going to be effective and it's going to be fiscally solvent. The board has to believe that these people know what they're doing, that they know how to set up a school, they know how to operate a school, that they're knowledgeable about this process. And there are satisfied different requirements. Actually. Bob probably has a very good feeling about it.
I want to add a little information. I, most of the, it's, it used to be that a 20-page document could get you a charter. Most recently, the charter, charters run 75, 100, 150 pages, as high as 400 pages, with detail after detail after detail, curriculum detail and so on. Now, that doesn't mean, this, this district can still approve a 20-page charter. As I suggested, there may be problems getting that approved at the state level where the state board has what they call the gold standard of charters. If you ask for a copy of it, you can't get it. It's sort of like the, they know it when they see it, but no one said what it is. But it can be, it can be very, very demanding in terms of length, level of expertise it takes to write it and so on.
Mr. Herron?
Well, first, I agree with a lot of things that Dr. Noel said, but I would take issue that solely the district's direction. Someone said the system has failed. And that system, yes, that cluster here, there's something here, that's the Governance Council, that's the principal, you know, that's, the entire system has failed in this process, which should have been, we are not here tonight to approve a charter. You know, a lot of people said in their comments, "Approve the charter, you know, approve the renewal." We're not being asked to approve renewal. We haven't presented a renewal. That should have been done five, six, Dr. Noel says, a year ago. These discussions should have been taken place seriously for a long time. So the district is, in essence, we're the last in line because the charter school technically runs itself, and that's the whole idea of a charter school. We should have had some oversight, we should have been involved, we should have advised, I think, when these discussions came up, "Get your charter renewal in line." It's my opinion that a charter renewal is a big document with a lot of things, talking about all the things you've heard tonight that are good about the school. The charter renewal is not just a series of numbers, API score, API score. You know, it is a package material saying, "This is a good school." You know, I think, you know, I use the example of the editorial in The Independent, wonderful editorial talking about all the good things about Cesar Chavez. That's one side of the story. You look at the editorial in the news press by Dr. Edenstein, it was all API, "Don't renew the school." We're in the situation is we love everything. I've got 80 letters, and I love every one of them, I agree with every one of them. There's nothing you can't agree with. I've got one editorial that says, "Don't do it." And Dr. Sarves, unfortunately, I've got deep covered in this for a long time. And in the letter we have from Dr., or Mr. Price, he makes it very clear, "It's our decision." But it makes it appear that you've made the decision, you've already, point blank said, "We have no choice." I wish you would have been, "In my opinion, I'm advising you," or, "Hey, you should be thinking about this." But it has come across that the decision was made, and we're sitting here, and I would put it against you versus Cesar Chavez. And it's not a good position for me to be in. It just grinds at me that this document, one of the whereas is a dagger in the heart, you know? It basically said, "You're not going to get renewed." I can't vote for that. You know, unfortunately, your choices are not the top, I mean, your choices aren't very good. I said it, Cesar Chavez, last night, that if you go for a renewal, it's a gamble. You know, because we're going to be sitting here looking at basically the same data. Now, hopefully, if you put a renewal in, it would be the big picture and maybe we could find things we could go along with. But boy, if we sat up here and said, "Hey, the education code says we can't do it, there is no clear convincing data that we're going to be voting down, you know, later or early part of next year or spring of next year." And there'll be no option, there'll be very few options. So, you know, I'm not saying I'm sitting here thinking you should apply for a renewal. You know, I think that's an option that should be on the table because I don't think, well, I think that's a renewed, that's an option that you, the Cesar Chavez, the Governance Council, you know, that's one of those decisions you might make. You might, you might come to the decision with our collaboration on a new charter. You know, it doesn't sound like the school wants a, what's the third option? A school charter. I mean, you made it very clear, in some of the minutes I've read, you made that clear after a three-month discussion early on, but maybe we consider that. You know, there's a lot of things on the table, but I'd like to give the school the options to look at. There's a lot of things in both of these memorandums that if we went through it paragraph by paragraph, we might come up with a conclusion, Dr. Noel, that your, your motion agrees with, because there is an item in here at the very end about an action plan, that condition of approval that maybe all of your things might go in. You know, so, you know, I think there's one of these versions here that we can look at. But I just, I wish things were different. This does hurt, but it is, it is sad, but we're not here to renew a charter. And that's the sad part of it all, that's not on our, that's not on our agenda. We can't do that. We haven't, we don't want to look at. So we can't renew a charter. That's the bottom line.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to bring up a point that Mr. Herron touched on, and that is that we all received lots and lots of emails and letters about this, and many of us sat down sometimes for hours with members of the Cesar Chavez community. And I know that we all appreciated getting those emails and letters, and I want to personally apologize, I don't know about the rest of you, but I was so inundated that I was not able to respond to them all. But certainly, I know that we read them all and took them all very seriously. In terms of the renewal, or whether or not this school qualifies for renewal, I'm concerned with some of the conversation around that for a couple of reasons. One is that it bothers me for us to be sitting here talking about should we try to, would it be okay to try to slide something by or try to get around the ed code? And that, I feel like that goes against every one of my principles, and I could not do And the other thing that worries me is that the, going forward with the idea of, "We'll slide that and maybe they can come back in the spring with a renewal," even though we know that the data hasn't changed, that that's putting them at even greater risk of not being open for 10-11 than saying, "If you go forward with a new charter, we're mandated to approve new charters if they meet the ed code requirements." And it's a very different position to be in than, than looking at a renewal where, again, we're looking at the past data, which is what the ed code requires us to do. And so I'm worried that the school is actually jeopardizing its future more by asking us to continue forward with the renewal process rather than saying, "We will do the work that it takes to conform with a new charter." And I also really want to recognize that we're in a completely different place than we were two weeks ago. And two weeks ago, we were talking about, "Is the school going to stay open or is the school enclosed?" And it's really clear now that the district's intention is that this school will stay open, and that's what I hear from board members as well. And to me, the better process is the process that's listed in this resolution that in terms of making sure that there's a Cesar Chavez dual-language immersion school next year and in the years in the future. So I want to talk about that also. The last thing I want to mention, and I'll give it back to the other board members, is that our legal counsel, Mr. Price, has actually recommended a change in the resolution in point four. So if you will look at point four, where it starts off with the Board of Education, the new language is the Governance Council is asked to approve the items in section three prior to December 18, 2009. If the Governance Council determines that these items are not acceptable, the expired charter will not be extended. The Governance Council is asked to approve all the items in section three prior to December 18, 2009. If the Governance Council determines that these items are not acceptable, the expired charter will not be extended.
I've always reacted a little bit when I hear statements about the board believes or the board agrees, or there is a, there's a consensus among board members. Because as we all know, the board is a corporate entity, only expresses those things by a vote. Otherwise, it's individual members. Now, people are certainly free to count heads about what individual members have said. But if it is true that the board wants the school to continue in operation, then I would suggest that the board vote on a resolution that says that, simple and plain. The minimum that comes out of this meeting tonight is a corporate expression that the board wants the school to continue in operation.
And Dr. Noel, we could have that as part of the resolution, although you'd have to be very careful because ultimately, a charter or a renewal, whatever language that people, the majority wanted to go for, it would need to be something that we have, we can look at again and make a decision about.
I understand that, and I have to say that almost everything in here is, certainly an argument to be for, and I find much of this very positive. But I just, but I also find positive elements in the version put forth by the, by Ms. Fleming. And I think that those could be woven into a combined statement. I don't think we can do it here. And that's what my impulse was, to buy us some time to do this, to be more thoughtful about it and have a genuine interaction between representatives of the board and representatives of the school to come out with a combined resolution that could be useful to everybody. Or if there are parts that can't be reinforced, we will find that out. So to me, that just takes time, that's why I might be getting on record, first of all, that we've knocked out funding, you know, that that letter go forward, and secondly, now, just to say with principle that we all agree and are willing to put on record that we want the school to continue, that's an intention of the board.
Mr. Herron?
I think the language you want is in this memorandum and very next to that, whereas the Board of Education expressed a desire to keep the school open until the end of the school year with major changes to ensure the success of students, particularly in which language learners. But as I understood, Dr. Sarves, the state wants more than just a statement that we want to keep it open. They want to see the major changes, and we have a December 1 deadline. So I think it's incumbent upon us to knock something out tonight that needs at least the minimum, the standards that Dr. Sarves outlines is what's necessary for him to put in writing December 1 before December 1 to keep the money alive until the end of the year. I don't think just a statement want to do it. I don't, Dr. Sarves, I don't think that would satisfy the state.
Mrs. Carrero? Well, it is, it's a little bit of sort of deja vu because five years ago, we were using the ed code to say that we had to renew the charter. And I admit that trying to finesse the ed code to allow us to renew it here, I don't know how many people remember that discussion five years ago, but we, unless we could find a reason not to renew it, we were required to renew it. So we were strictly adhering So, we were strictly adhering to the ed code, and now I know I'm suggesting that we may be finessed it a bit. But I'm wondering if we could accomplish anything, and tell me if this is too vague, if we simply deleted the third whereas, and deleted number two of, under, therefore be resolved, and at least agreed to extend the charter through the end of the school year with the guidelines, I guess, that are listed under item three. Does that accomplish anything for us?
I'm sorry, are you saying delete number two?
Yes. Number two seems to be the sticking point in terms of whether we, whether we would say a new charter petition, a new materially revised charter. Number two is, I think, the one that eliminates the possibility of seeking charter renewal.
And I think that you meant that you would also need to, well, I don't know. Tell me, talk to me about the fourth whereas.
I would still assume that the fourth whereas would be included, because it would require the Governance Council to accept all the bullets in number three.
No, no, I meant the fourth whereas.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fourth whereas, I'm looking at the fourth resolve. Well, I was thinking, I was going to suggest that we change the does-not-qualify to may-not-qualify. Because certainly there is some, the school would argue that does qualify under number four. And certainly, that has been in question.
Here's my question on this one, Mrs. Cordero. You could do that, and then the school could go around in circles and come back and go around in circles with the Board about whether or not it qualifies for renewal. But where does that, if you're coming forward with a petition, like a new petition, I mean, that process really needs to start immediately. And so, I'm a little concerned that, again...
I guess what I was hoping is maybe to divide the resolution, so that we could at least vote on the part that I think we may have agreement on, and then tackle the part that we seem to have disagreement on separately. Still likely tonight, but just as a separate motion.
Okay, so, there would be a removal of the third and the fourth whereas, and then the second, therefore be resolved, and then the new language that Mr. Price suggested is to be replaced with point four.
Although my suggestion was not to remove the fourth whereas, but since the change does-not-qualify to may-not-qualify.
Yes, Mr. Herron.
The top line is, and I would like to remove the two wheres totally. And as far as the number two, maybe something like the Board of Education in collaboration with the district. Board of Education, request that the community in collaboration with the district come forward with a plan for rigorous dual-language immersion program during the spring 2010, for a school program to commence operating late of July 1, 2010, and leave, leave out the specifics, but have the attitude to work, come up with, you know, a plan. So, leave it in, but take out the ultimate of two courses of action, leaving it open for the community. And I thought that something makes sense to them and to us.
Mrs. McInnes.
Well, I'm a little concerned that by doing this, we're going to give the school a very little direction about where they might go next. I mean, whether or not we decide that the language limits us, I'm pretty risk averse, and to me, it's more risky to team forward with the notion of a renewal that might fail as opposed to a new charter that I certainly would support and believe that could succeed with the support of this Board. So, I guess I'm a little worried that we're preempting, we're putting off something we're going to have to do anyway. And that, that the Governance Council really needs the benefit of the time that they would get if we make a decision, a more definitive decision to not. And I, you know, listening to the speakers earlier, I was, I really wish we were two years out from now, because this soup made a good case for the fourth graders and how well they're doing, that that cohort and those that will follow. But I'm having a hard time squaring, kind of pulling together, what feels like disparate interpretations of the model when we looked at Mrs. Linda Home, sorry, Linda Home-Lary's data that showed there was weakness in the fifth and sixth grade, and yet previously, we had been, the notion had been presented that that's where, in fact, this model turns around. And so, that's really contradictory data. And so, I guess I'm just really having a hard time going back to this clear and convincing data point. And we may not like the way the law is written. Right now, I really wish it gave us a lot more latitude, but, I mean, this sounds like a cliche, but we're a nation of laws, and we really have to follow what is written. And I think some people see the renewal here, I have to hold this, and a reborn charter way over here, but to me, they're much closer together. I know it's a lot of hard work, but it's going to be a hard work, hard work no matter which way we go. And so, I'm personally leaning towards the notion of a new charter, because I really think that that solves both of our dilemmas, it applies with the law, but it gives you the school that you already have, just changed in the way that you've all talked about making those changes. I mean, everyone's bought into those changes. And so, I don't see it as so far apart.
May I respond? No. Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution with the elimination of the third whereas, the change of the word does to may in the fourth whereas, and the revision of the number two with, be resolved as Mr. Herron suggested, with sympathy and come forward with a restructuring plan for rigorous dual-inversion program, and the change in the, in number four as suggested by our chairman.
Is there a second?
I'd like to know.
All right. Sure. Well, I'll have a chance to speak about it.
I'm not going to call a vote on it yet.
Okay. So, you said that then you'd be willing to consider separately the notion of a renewal or not? Because I'm not sure, I guess I'm just wondering where this leaves us tonight, just out here.
Well, I admit it, I don't think it takes it very far forward. But it does, it does get the one issue out of the way, which is, the school will be in operation until the end of the year. That's essentially, I think, what it does for us. And allows the school the opportunity to agree, if they want that extension, to these guidelines for working with the district.
Dr. Herron, what?
Yes, I, that, incorporating Mr. Herron's suggestion, we call it, because the part about developing the plan for, during spring 2010, for what happens in 2010-11 is, sorry, that's the reason I support that. There's one issue that has not, I don't think receives enough attention. To my mind, the appointment of a new principal is a very big deal. And in that sense, the school has already taken a, well, they haven't got a new principal yet, but they've already done one of the, a change in leadership is one of the first things one thinks about when one thinks about returning to school. And we know that the principal can really be, if not the key to success or failure, it's certainly a major part of that. So, I, that's one of the reasons I wanted to see some process that includes the new principal. Here's the dilemma. We can ask the school to do a lot of planning, and they haven't hired a principal yet. The principal comes in, and then, in a sense, you have to start over. That may not be all that bad, but normally, you think of developing major plans for a school as being done by the league, and certainly, it has to be by, it can't be a fit and complete. So, I think factoring the new principal in is very important, how to do that time-wise. I don't know, and the school, they have already a plan for how it's going to recruit, to fill that position. And I bring that up because the second, the first bullet under number three, I have a little problem with it. To me, that ties...
Second, I ask the privilege of interrupting you. Can we focus on the motion we made? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Carter. Can we focus on the motion? Because my understanding is, that doesn't, that's not the end all. Maybe we take those other issues separately from what...
Well, I'm just going to talk about the first bullet under number three, and my comments about the principal were prefacing remarks to that.
But the motion was on item two, and the two wheres.
But then we're passing the rest of the document.
I didn't hear the rest of the document.
I seconded a motion under the assumption it was the whole document.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, there's other things I would like to talk about then.
Yes, let me just clarify that I was making a motion to adopt the resolution with those changes.
Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Okay? Yeah. Okay, okay. So, the comments about the principal have to do with this first bullet point, where it says spend $40,000 for someone who will be appointed by the district. And it seems to me that that kind of locks in issues and money that what would be the relationship with that person as a new principal? It just seems to me that we're not in a position to kind of nail that down. So, I would, I would move to remove that first bullet in number three.
All right, there's a motion to amend the main motion. Is there a second to that? All right, amendment dies, a motion to amend it dies for lack of a second. Mr. Herron.
I would like to act out of Sarvas, what he thinks the difference is between that first bullet point and the bullet point in exhibit F1, where it talks about the possibility of hiring a bilingual consultant with expertise in two-way immersion to advise the school on instructional programs. Are we just talking about definition of a person? Because it looks like the end result is the same, but it's just a difference in who that person is possibly. I'm just curious, the difference, your opinion on the difference in those two words?
In fact, I was considering that the school could do anything else they wanted. You know, part of bringing in an expert is to redesign the program. And my concern would be to focus on instructional process right now, so that we get an immediate increase. A leader of the school is an important part of that. When we think about management positions, we think we're not going to have anyone for three months. If we apply that to this situation, that would be, the principal would be coming in, what, in February? And the consultant's work is by and large done by, this is something that needs to happen now. The consultant needs to be in early, keep working with staff.
Well, that was very, very good. Yes, you see that is sequential, whether the, well, in actuality, yes.
I'm afraid that what I'm hearing now from board members is a desire to stick their heads in the sand about the renewal. It's going to come back to us, whether it's now, or two months from now, or four months from now. The basic question, does this charter qualify for renewal based on point four of 47607? Do you see, and can you sign your name off on a report that's going up to this State Superintendent of Public Construction, that you have seen clear and convincing data from the past? Because the law requires that we look at the past of the charter, not the charter's best intentions, and not the direction that the charter is going. And so, I'm really concerned that we're starting to push the Governance Council down that path when we, you know, I don't know how the board members would vote on this, but in two or three or four months, the data's not going to change. We're looking at saying, oh, I'm sorry, you spent three months working on this, but really and truly, you don't qualify for renewal under that ed code. And then, they're in a terrible place. And I really, I don't think it's doing the school any favors to try to avoid this difficult decision. I don't think it's doing it any favors to even postpone this difficult decision, because they need to get started. So, personally, I really couldn't support removing, or changing the language of the fourth whereas. I'm certainly fine with leaving out the third whereas. It's the truth of why we get to the fourth whereas. And I think the language for number two should stay the same. Dr. Noel.
Mr. Herron, go ahead.
May I ask Mrs. Lomine a question? Assuming something passes tonight, will the Governance Council try to do this themselves? Or will they bring in an expert in charter schools? And hopefully, give you advice, give us advice, as what the best, most possible course of action is? What will the Governance Council do as a result of going forward, knowing that you're under the guidance would be very difficult?
So, I can't speak to the Governance Council, but I will say that we have, we've been communicating with Eric Premack, and today was the first time that we saw from him a recommendation to move forward with a new charter. And the only reason, we just haven't had time to investigate. That might be the best thing for our community. We've had no time, and we've heard rumors from different people at the state or at the Charter Development Center saying it'll be really expensive, and you won't be able to, you know, you'll lose money here, or you'll lose money there. We don't know if you can keep your corporate, nonprofit status. We've had literally less than 24 hours to even consider the notion of a new charter. We've been trying to work on renewal, but it was stated that we were ineligible before the expiration date of our charter. So, it's not that we're opposed to the language of a new charter, and it's not like we're going to sit around and wait. We just wanted time to investigate if that was something that we felt like our community could financially do, and emotionally do as well.
I got my question, if you're dead set on a renewal, and that's the only course of action you're taking in the next five months. You know, I think Mr. Carter is probably totally correct. From, Mr. Premack, you know, he says that, and this was when he wrote after the law passed in 2005, these new requirements will have an especially negative impact on those charter schools serving academically underperforming students, such as those of academic skill and low grade level. The other criteria make it very hard for the schools to meet. Proving to be, proving to the high legal standard of clear and convincing data that a charter school's performance is at least equal to the others is extremely challenging, is, you know, it just, it's very hard. And so, if you're going down the road of a renewal, and without anybody else giving you help, I would say that's hard. But I question, if you're going to bring in some good... But a question, if you're going to bring in some good quality people to give you advice, are you willing to take it?
Well, since last two weeks, we've spent through about 15 hours with an attorney to help us figure out the best course, and we feel like she's given us great advice. And we've also run through the five hours of free time we get with the charter school development center. So, we're not doing it alone, we're not interested in doing it alone, we're certainly looking for the best course for our students.
And in getting to Mrs. Parker's comment, or, sorry, screen, he says, "The relationship between the charter school and its charter-granted agency would be a critical factor in how this provision of the renewal criteria is interpreted. Those charter-granted agencies that have a positive relationship with their charter schools will likely interpret this section of the rule. Those who do not, won't."
Dr. Noah.
I certainly approve of what Mr. Herron is saying. I'm sorry. I would like to, to comment on a couple of things. The new charter idea, under the state, federally funded state program for startup grants for charter schools, which can, elementary school, I'm not sure how much it is now, maybe $400,000, $405,000, high school, about $600,000 now. They allow, of that grant, the first, the first distribution is $45,000, again, I'm a little out of date maybe, but it's $45,000 to go for charter development. And, you know, how on earth could you spend that much? Let me tell you, it costs you about $6,000 or $7,000, up to $12,000 for a financial analyst to write the financial plan. It'll cost you up to $20,000 for a lawyer to do all the legal work to get that squared away. So it's a very expensive process, that's one of the reasons I attempted the other way. On that point, it seems to me that the issue, whether we're talking about a new charter or a renewal, is really not the point. The point is, as Mr. Herron brought up, coming up with a plan. Something that addresses the issues that have been raised about the school, and is a roadmap for going forward. Whether you go in, whether they go in for a renewal, or whether it goes in as a new charter, there's going to have to be what is called in the statute, a sound educational plan. And that is very, that's spelled out in great detail in the California Code of Regulation, I think, in Mr. Price, telling what those words mean when you read all the desiderata that come down for how to write a charter. All that stuff's still irrelevant, but you have to have a plan. So to me, that's intellectually prior, and it's also logically prior to the issue of whether or not this will be a renewal or a charter.
So, Dr. Noah, you have seen clear and convincing data. You have seen clear and convincing data that the students score comparably or higher on the data as other schools.
Mrs. Parker, I have seen the data, and I've heard an expert from San Jose State, and in fact, as recently as last night, I was telling anyone who asked me, but I don't think they could win the data argument. Listening to the presentation from San Jose State, I moved a little bit from that position. I now say, it's an argument, okay? And it's subject to interpretation. And at any point up and down the line in this process, there's always going to be a debate over interpretation. At the same time, as I read rule number four, I read the possibility for a broadened interpretation of what kind of data we use. And that would allow us to be somewhat responsive to the pleas that we're hearing from both experts as well as family members at the school, that there are other values than the things that we're looking at as measures of the effectiveness of the schools. And we got that, the letter they presented us from Jack O'Callaghan addressed that issue, that there's an intrinsic value in the idea of dual language. So I think that these are debatable issues at every level, and I have every expectation they will be debated in Sacramento. However this arrives in Sacramento, renewal or new charter, this is on the map now, up there. These debates will continue.
Mrs. Deacon. Well, first, I just want to agree, I think no one disputes all the wonderful unique qualities of the school, and that's not what we're here to talk about. I mean, I think we all, we all know that, we know that so well, that, you know, that's what makes this all the more difficult. But I ultimately think this clear and convincing data question is something that we have to make a decision about sooner rather than later, so that the school population knows where they need to go, where the community needs to go. I guess, Mr. Hayden, could you address Ms. Lindaholm-Larry's status? Is that new for us this evening? Dr. Deacon.
Yes, I can. I guess I would like to only approach it from a technical viewpoint, because I think that's, that is at the heart of this. There was a couple of problems with her presentation. One, she used cell data inappropriately. Reason why I only use cell data in terms of AMO's one and two is because that's the only way it's supposed to be used, it can be used for initial assessments too, but the way it was used was inappropriate. The second thing is that, once again, she presented data on small cell sizes, looking at just one year in grades and one year. We, at the request somewhat of the school, went ahead and included some of that data in our presentation too. But when we did that, we tried to make sure it was a large enough cell size. So some of the inappropriateness of that was also apparent in her data, because that was primary what she was focusing on. You'll notice that the lines for Caesar Chavez went up and down quite a bit on most of the graphs, that's reflective of the very small cell size. So, technically, it had many flaws to it, and I would rather work with them if we had to on data, but at this point in time, I've not seen any clear and convincing data, I've seen some sporadic data, and I've seen some data that maybe points out certain classes or certain grade levels, but it hasn't looked at the larger picture of the data. That's the technical analysis of her presentation.
Thank you. I guess for me, it comes back to, again and again, thank you for bringing up, again, that it would go, it isn't just our board if we were heading down the renewal path, that it is going to the state board at that point, and it's not just going to the state board for charter number. And so, again, I mean, not only are they risking that we would shoot it down ultimately because it does not meet that code 47607, but then, the state, even if we did it, the state could shoot it down. And then, at that point, that would mean the school would be closing for 10/11, because there would not be time for us to start that process over again. So, I hope board members are taking that into consideration. All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there further discussion, or?
One other question, probably on a scale of one to 10, if somebody said Caesar Chavez is a two, but I'm curious why, and maybe have one, two, three, four, five, fifth, whereas, why doesn't it just stop at has expired? Why go on to say that there's been no renewal petition filed, has it been on January 21, 2009?
Dr. Tucker?
I was merely trying to make clear what is and what isn't. There isn't any other place here that says we have not been asked.
I was just, when I first read that, it looked like it was, it was, I just took it wrong, I just took it as if, why haven't you? And it just hit me wrong when I first read it, very first time, it's almost like, you didn't do your job right, so therefore, we're going to put it there to say you didn't do your job right, when in fact, I indicated, I think there's a lot of people, and a lot of entities responsible for that, and it's just not, it's just not the fact that they were not diligent, they just didn't do it based for a lot of reasons. But it just seemed, it sends the wrong message, it implies that they didn't do their job, and they didn't, but there's other reasons too.